So we're gonna use some of that federal money to pay for because the bid came in a little bit higher than what was budgeted.
Thanks, sir.
Yeah, as everything right now, it's not a good time to be bidding, and I hope to not bid anything else for a while. You also have a resolution in front of you that I'm sure you will have questions about as you read through it. This is not new debt, he will say that probably here in a minute, but this is where letters of credit, I believe, have expired. But Chris Bessler with Cumberland Securities is here to explain that. And after he does so, I respectfully ask someone to put that on the agenda next week, too, because those letters of credit are expiring. Chris?
Chris Bessler, Cumberland Securities, Knoxville, Tennessee. In front of you, you have a resolution which pertains to the county's Series Seven E One loan, which is with Regions Bank. These loans require ongoing maintenance every three to five years. The bank agrees to a new term to hold the bond issuer, the loan. And at the end of that three to five year term, we just have to go through a normal process to renew it. That helps keep the credit cost low by doing that. The bank, in going out three or five years instead of the original twenty years of the loan, is able to provide a lower credit cost to the county on doing so. Additionally, this time around, one thing that's different is this loan was originally set to the index of LIBOR, the London Interbank Offered Rate. That index is going away as of June thirtieth next year. Federal regulators are all over banks to try to get out of LIBOR agreements, so that way it will have a clean phase out. Local entities will not be negatively impacted by that. Regions Bank, the holder of this loan, has put forth an alternative solution to this that we've been doing with clients all over. And it would switch it from the London Interbank Offered Rate, or LIBOR, to the Bloomberg Short Term Yield Index, also known as BSBY is its acronym, BSBY. This is another index that is, there's two or three indexes that are set to replace LIBOR, and this is one of the more prominent indexes that has taken off to replace LIBOR. So it is our recommendation as your municipal advisor that you accept the proposal from Regions Bank that would extend the current expiration date of June one, two thousand twenty-two. It would take it out to June one of two thousand twenty-five, and at the same time, convert it from LIBOR to Bloomberg Short Term Yield Index. And then with that, I can answer any questions you have. And just to reiterate, as the mayor said, this is not new debt, this is just maintenance of existing.
You don't have any questions? Commissioner Ripper?
Said I would take it down, so.
Mr. Blake?
Hey, thank you for being here. So I understand the Bloomberg index, and there are other ones. Why the Bloomberg index? It's prominent, you're right.
Yeah, it's a prominent one, and so far, it seems that the Bloomberg Short Term Yield Index is where banks have been more comfortable hedging their capital on the backside of their loan. And so, for whatever reason, the banks that we've been working with, whether it's US Bank, Bank of America, Regions Bank, First Horizon, most of the banks that are in this market have chosen to go with the Bloomberg Short.
Not to be, so if it was, I mean, Regions is saying that's who the index that they want to use, right? It's not Cumberland Securities.
Correct, yeah.
So they're basically advising all their clients to do that, everybody who's in the LIBOR situation.
Correct, and we actually solicited from Regions Bank multiple index proposals. So they submitted, in addition to the Bloomberg Short Term Yield Index, they submitted a proposal based on the secured overnight funding rate, also known as SOFR, and also on the SIFMA rate, which is a tax exempt. Both of those other alternatives resulted in a higher cost of funding for the county. So, and that's how they're doing it, because they're trying to direct people to.
I just wondered what the value add was, what's the differential between those indexes? And I'm trying to remember what the other one was, but that's, it's coming from the originator, I guess, pretty much, right?
Correct, and compared to where the county is right now on LIBOR, it drops, it drops the interest rate from where you are right now about fourteen basis points, point one four percent.
Well, that leads me to my next question, and if you don't mind, to be a little bit more in-depth on when you refer to lost credit cost in your statements. You mentioned a few seconds ago, maybe I misunderstood you, lost credit cost, and I was like, okay, that's a new term for me.
So when, so when, when the bank goes out and they make a loan, so for instance, they could, your loan was twenty years long, and instead of making a capital commitment for the entire twenty years, they make these commitments in three, typically three-year segments. Sometimes they'll go out five years. So they'll make a commitment for three years to provide credit for your loan to where you don't have to worry about anything during that term. At the end of that three-year term, they go through what's called a renewal, where they just extend it another three years typically. No changes take place, and you don't see us have to come before you. The reason that they go on those shorter periods, three years typically, is because it allows them to have a lower cost of capital, which means you have a lower cost of credit.
So this benefits them as well?
They would be neutral, it makes it to where, when, if they go out longer, they're gonna, they're gonna make themselves be cost-neutral on that, and the cost would then be passed on to the county. So we don't, we don't recommend going out longer than these three to five-year increments, because we don't want the county to have to pay the higher cost of the capital.
Okay. I'll, I'll get to that, I guess. I mean, well, we entered into this knowing that they would do this, right?
Correct.
Yeah. If I'm, well, that's all I have about this, but I do have another question for you, because you are, you handle all of our bonds. Is we, it's well-publicized, well-known, the feds are increasing rates, and the anticipation is that they're gonna do it three more times before the end of this year, conservatively, maybe even more, but at least three. I think, Mayor, and turn me if I'm wrong, forty percent of our debt on the bond side is variable. I guess, at a high level, or as much detail as you would like, as we get ready to go into budget here this summer, how do you think that will affect our variable bond with our rates? Because they were very, very attractive, it was almost free money to a certain extent, now it's not going to be. But we budget above, I get the gap between the two.
Right. This past budget, this past budget year, you had a budget rate of about three percent on this loan. We would probably recommend increasing that to four, four and a half percent as a budget rate. You have about twenty-four percent of your outstanding debt is in unhedged variable, so it's pure, it's pure variable rate. So it would really only affect about a quarter percent, a quarter, I'm sorry, of the outstanding debt balance. And right now, one of the things that we were seeing is, this starts to get a little bit more technical, but the, the tax-exempt municipal debt is trading on par with treasury debt. That's not a normal scenario. Normally, you have tax-exempt debt trade at about seventy percent of where the treasuries are. So what we would expect to see happen is as the Fed continues to increase rates, the municipals will no longer go up as much, because they've already been penalized. So the municipal tax-exempt debt has already been penalized a bit more, they've gone up and increased faster than treasuries have.
You address, or answer my question, that is that we probably do need to adjust our gap between what we budgeted and what the actual projection is going to be. Last question. As you know, we took out two bonds for the, what we call the Pi Center. And we did that in two because of the timing of the ten million dollars that the financial institutions get the, that ten million dollar credit on their side. Since this is not new debt, that doesn't affect that ten million benchmark at all, does it?
Correct, yeah, and, and those were done in two thousand twenty and two thousand twenty-one, so you're clear, even if you were to do new debt.
Commissioner Cry?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Blake stole most all of my thunder, but I, I, I'm concerned about the amount of variable rate bonds that we have with already two rate increases by the Federal Reserve, and as Commissioner Blake said, there will be three more. What is your opinion on turning or converting these variable rates over to fixed rate?
Well, that's always the philosophy of, of the issuer on, on how much variable to take on. Right now, the county is well within the normal bounds from the rating agencies on how much variable rate debt it has in the twenty-five to thirty percent range. That, in addition to the fund balance it has in its debt service fund. If you were to convert all or a portion of it to fixed rate, right now, you'd be looking at above three percent, closer to three and a quarter, three, three and a half percent with the remaining average life that's left on this loan. With the variable rate right now, you're still under probably about one and a quarter percent. And so even with three more rate increases, and let's just say they're each fifty basis points, so let's, let's say you go up another one and a half percent there, you're still looking at coming in under that, under three percent. And then if rates go back down, say here in another two or three years, then you get to benefit from that versus locking yourself in for the next ten years at three and a quarter, three and a half percent.
Well, thank you very much, that clarifies that quite a bit. The other, you mentioned the, we're, we're well within the range, what is the range? I may ask, to maintain the bond reading, it's critical that we maintain that bond reading.
Absolutely, it is. The general range that Moody's and S and P and Pitch, which the, which the county doesn't use, that they like to see, and they won't, they won't publish this, they kind of will go off the record with you. And, and it also depends on who the issuer is. So for an entity like Bradley County, who has good fund balance, you're a county, not a small city, it's harder for you to lose your tax base. They are more, much more comfortable in that twenty to thirty-five, even up to forty percent if you've got fund balance to offset it. And the county does have fund balance to offset it as well, so that's, that's not even factored into that twenty-five percent purely variable number that, that we talked about earlier.
And what is our present range, you said thirty, thirty-five percent is what we're at right now?
You have twenty-five percent purely, pure variable rate.
And built into that is our fund balance that will add more cushion to that?
That does not even take into account your fund balance, so when you take into account your fund balance, that helps decrease that.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Cry, Commissioner Davis?
Mr. Jim, real quick, if I may, not all of our debt is in bonds, though. Right, what you're referring to is how much is in bond. We, we also have some other debt that's not bonds.
You have leases.
We, we interfund loans and stuff like that.
Yeah, the interfund loan, you have, the school system has the energy lease that it took out as well, and that also would decrease the percent of variable that, that the county has as well, that's correct.
Mr. Davis?
Um, this may be a question for the mayor. What, what is included in this? When did we originally take this out, and what, what did this money go to? You know? No, the, the total amount that we're talking about, what was it originally taken out for?
The original loan was taken out in two thousand seventeen. Remember what this was for?
It's confusing because it's a combination thing. When we refinance, so we put them together. You know, I mean, most of them are school bonds, that would be safe to say, most of them are school bonds, but I think we took some of the GO bonds from the jail and the juvenile center, and they were put together when we refinanced. But the majority of our debt, like eighty percent of it, is schools. Does that kind of answer your question?
Yes, it does, I, I just.
The papers he's showing me, it lists them as GO bonds or school bonds. The GO bonds are basically jail, juvenile center, fire department.
Okay, so it was taken out in two thousand seventeen, and we're hoping to pay it off by twenty thirty-seven?
By twenty thirty-seven?
It is the last payment?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Any other questions? I thank you, sir, appreciate your time.
All I have, Mr. Chairman, unless someone has a question for me.
He won't have any questions, the mayor. Yeah, I've got it. Our reports from committees and our districts will start to my left, Commissioner Winters.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, the seventh district's in great shape. I do want to say how disappointed I am, and I think many of my constituents in the low turnout that we had in the election. Mr. Blake has, has mentioned several times the importance of the election and the fact that the taxpayer has already, already paid for a, a, a large turnout in an election, and I think we had twenty percent in the election at this point. So I'm, I'm, my people in my district were just kind of concerned that the numbers turn out for the important elections were disappointing. That's all I got to say, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Winters, Commissioner Ripper?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, I want to welcome Josh Rogers, he'll be sitting in this seat, and congratulations, Josh. I see behind him Josh Taylor, a new school board member, and I don't want to leave Josh out. And my next thing would be for the mayor. Mayor, you mentioned this in finance the other day, would you mind expounding a little bit, just for the general public? A lot of them didn't hear the finance about, we had an accident with the ambulance and, and where we are on number. We were already somewhat short, I think we were more short on personnel than we were the ambulances, but if you could explain that just for the public, please.
Yeah, of course, the ambulance insurance, did say was totaled, so that's in the works to get that back, which will be replacing it in time. We've still got two ambulances in this year's budget that have not been delivered, hopefully this month or June. We did have an ambulance that had a small accident a few months ago that will be back in service this week. And of course, immediately, we had a backup ambulance for it. But yeah, what I was saying was, more importantly than all of that, was we're short the two employees here for a period of time. Hopefully, they'll be back soon.
Thank you.
Anything else, Commissioner Ripper?
No, sir, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Davis?
Thank you. Things are better than in the sixth than expected. I just want to thank everyone that did come out to vote in the sixth district. Elections are hard, and you work hard, and you don't always get the result that you want or expect, but I want to thank all of the friends that stood beside me and helped me run that campaign. And you also kind of realize who is not for you, and sometimes they might be sitting right next to you, but you find out that they benefit themselves and not the district as a whole. So thank you to everybody that came out, and we have three months of work to do, and so it's time for us to get back to work and finish some of the things that we have started, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis, Commissioner Mason?
Thank you, Chairman, sixth district's doing well, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Slater?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This Saturday will be the last tire cleanup for this budget year at exit twenty. We do have some young men, twenty to twenty-five, committed to come and help. But we, we will meet at exit twenty around the lake area at eight thirty a.m. on Saturday morning.
Eight thirty, thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Goins?
District for four more years, I appreciate their votes. And the fifth district's getting some more sidewalks down Dalton Pike and, and all over, and, and they're tearing up the roads in process. All I have.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Goins. Commissioner Thompson?
Fourth district, good shake.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Cry?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, second district's doing great, thank you.
Thank you, sir, Commissioner Pete?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Tim Mason, on Hawk Street, did you get a chance to go out and look at all that dump that they've been dumping? And I also like to thank Tim for cleaning up APD forty, that's not part of his area he's supposed to clean up, but he does, he goes behind all these dump trucks that it comes out of, they're untarp vehicles quite a bit. So he always takes care of that and makes everything look as best he can with those. I think you've got two trucks now going all the time, two litter cruisers, and I know Mike helps him with that, so I appreciate that. And we are working on the old power line drive issue. Tim is trying to get the guy to clean up his concrete dump site that he did on the side of the mountain there. And then we have several, several other areas that I'll be sending to Commissioner Tim. And just for the rest, so everybody knows, we're not lame ducks sitting up here. We still do have three months of hard work that we have been working on for the last four years, infrastructure is one of those. So we will do the best that we can to get as much as we can get done in that timeframe. I do appreciate everyone that came out to vote. I am very saddened that a lot of people didn't feel the need to come out and vote, whether they thought, thought some of the people on the ballot were jokes or not. It's no joke when it comes to your right to vote, and you should exercise that right to vote every chance you get, because people did die for you to have that freedom to do so. So I appreciate everyone that did finally come out to vote, and, and we will get to work up here. There were three of us, the hardest workers that you could imagine. You did vote off of your hardest workers, in my opinion. And then, of course, some of you won't be coming back for other reasons, because you chose other, other paths. But I will miss all of you at the end of August, but it has been a great ten years to serve Bradley County, long ten years. Probably this last four years has been the longest, but we will get to work and do what we always do, and that's work for Bradley County and serve you, as we always have done, so I appreciate you all.
Thank you, Mr. Pete, Mr. Blake, Mr. Cry forgot something.
Yeah, I, I've forgotten, this lady would never forgive me if I didn't bring it up. Jenkins Road, I want to refer to the road committee, I believe that's the appropriate place. This property adjoins the west side of Coil Run subdivision. They have a drainage problem, the water running from Coil Run onto their property. They allege that the plat does not reflect any drainage across their property, which they get flooded apparently, and I'd like to bring this to the attention of the road committee along with the other in Arrowhead Point.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Cry. Did you get that, Commissioner Mason?
Okay.
Commissioner Blake?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, Mr. Chairman, I apologize, I need to make a change, I will not be here next Monday. Had an event already planned, so if you'll, somebody else will put that resolution for the, the.
Mr. Ripper?
The bond issue, I appreciate that, I apologize, but we already had plans. Um, in, in that same regard, I want to congratulate, this week, you're gonna have a lot of seniors walk across that stage, and a lot of parents thrilled to see those seniors walk across that stage. My wife and I, one of them, then we're gonna send them off. But I do want to congratulate all those seniors, they had to go through, I think they would have been sophomores during COVID, I believe, if my number is correct. So, um, congratulations, and I wish them all very well. Last, speaking of elections, you know, that is, I think it's passionate to all our heart, but I had the opportunity and honor to serve the Election Commission. Doing a quick survey of how many people we have sitting in here, and if you look at the percentage of people who participated, was the percentage, or the total number who could have participated, I'm not going to single anybody out, but if you take three individuals here, they just, three individuals just made a decision for everybody in this room. That gives you a little perspective of what just happened. Three individuals out of everybody in this room decided what everybody would do or what not do. So hopefully, we can encourage more people in the next go-around, August is the next go-around, that'll be our state and federal primary, and then in November, that'll be the general. So hopefully, more people will participate in our elections. It cost us about forty-five thousand dollars in the budget to process and hold an election, whether it's the primary here in May or in August or whatnot, so that's all I have, Mr. Chairman, I was wondering there.
Thank you, Mr. Blake, Commissioner Alford?
Yes, just a couple of items, first of all, I'd like to thank everyone in the second district that voted for Tom and I both. Looked like our numbers were pretty much the same, so obviously, the same people voted for both of us, Mr. Cry. Then the same people voted against us, I guess. But anyway, pet peeve of mine, I'd just like to encourage all the people that won or lost elections to get your signs up off the side of the road, I know the county's starting to mow, and I see a lot of signs still out there along the road, and it really hurts those lawnmowers if, or could be dangerous if someone hits those things and throws that metal everywhere which way. Speaking of signs, also, I'd like to encourage anyone up in the Charleston area, if you see one of my signs, seemed like some of mine grew legs, they weren't where they're supposed to be, so obviously, they're floating around up there somewhere. So if someone happens to see one of mine, please give me a call, and I'd be glad to come pick it up. And then if you remember many, many years ago, President Obama made one comment, elections have consequences, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alford. Mr. Hughes?
Well, this will be for Commissioner Alford. Actually, while I was picking up signs, I ran into a constituent, that constituent asked me a simple question, and I will repeat it exactly the way it's put to me. They said, "I want to know why the landfill is not accepting a legal tender." Apparently, they are not accepting cash again, and they're really, I don't know if Mayor Davis, if you could speak to them, see if they can change that again. But it is definitely causing an issue out in my area, and I'm sure others do. But other than that, you are correct, elections do have consequences, same as votes, when you're up here voting. I will miss everyone that, that is here that will be leaving, because I've enjoyed working with all of you, I truly have. I may not agree every time on every political issue, but we're not up here to vote for, because we like somebody or don't like somebody. It just so happens that we all get along, and in the end, we all get along. And you don't have to agree with somebody or disagree with them to like them. Again, I will miss you all, but I've got three months to be with you, and so I'm looking forward to the time that we do get to be together.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes. Thank you, Mr. Hughes, Commissioner Thompson?
Since you mentioned the landfill, I've got a couple complaints from last week, I guess, talking about they will not receive cash anymore, it's all credit card or whatever. But you know, when I read this, what's on this money, it says, "This note is legal tender for all states, public and private." So I, you know, that's a big problem to a lot of people, they don't carry a credit card. And they, I've had three complaints in the last two, three weeks here, just on account of that, they wouldn't take cash. We need to check into that and, and see why they won't. And I, I'm sure that they have reasons for that, but we, it's something that we need to follow up on anyway.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson, Mr. Epperson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and everything's doing good in the first district, but I'd like to take this time in this moment to appreciate the citizens in the first district, and actually, everybody in Bradley County for giving me this opportunity to serve these last four years. And we, like Commissioner Pete said, that we have about three to four more months left, and we will use that time to move our county forward. I've enjoyed working with the fellow commissioners, and I always think, I'm a firm believer that everything happens for a reason, and I think God has different plans for me. I think that the three that are, will be leaving here, he's decided, God has decided that he doesn't want us in this environment anymore, because it's not an easy environment. And the oppositions that each, all three of us had to endure during the election process, a lot of things happened in the night, and things, signs and things got put up in the middle of the night. And, but you know, that, that character and the, the character that those people, that did not reflect the character of us three, it reflected the characters of their actions, so. And the low turnout, there was a low turnout in the city. But I do appreciate how close my election was, even after all that opposition that I endured. Appreciative of those citizens that did vote, did come out and vote, and it showed that, you know, they weren't able to convince the vast, well, pretty much about fifty percent of the citizens in the first district. So I do appreciate that, and I look forward to working for the next three to four months. And, and I'm, I'm thankful, and I feel blessed, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Epperson. Mr. Pete?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I did forget to mention, um, if it is possible to go ahead and schedule the landfill committee, uh, that we had postponed for May the 23rd, if that'll give everybody time to get them back in here on their, um, request from us. Um, everybody look at your calendars, make sure that's good. I know it's before budget, but... That's the next work session, Monday. And if we could do that, uh...
Do it prior to, or...
Yeah, would that be a 7:00 PM? That is, uh... How much time do you think we'll need, Mayor? Okay.
Six o'clock.
All right, 6:00 PM.
Anything else, Commissioner Pete?
And if you have any questions that did not get asked, or we, I think we gave them a few questions to come back and report to us on, um, just make sure you get them to Lori so that we can get them to them.
Okay. Mr. Crye?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Going, add on to this landfill thing, I call it a breach of trust. As I recall, the gentleman coming in here telling us that he would take cash, he would prefer not to, that he would take cash. To me, that's a promise. I'm a little bit like the Mr. Thompson here. I, I don't carry a credit, I, I carry them, I don't use them. I use cash a lot. Uh, I don't use the landfill, uh, that much because I have my stuff picked up. But it's a breach of trust, and that has to be directed at somebody, because he stood at that podium and told us that. And I'd like to keep that in mind when we deal with him. You're going to say something, mean what you say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crye. Anybody else want to say it? Okay, moving into the agenda. Item A, Commissioner Epperson.
Oh, hold on, I gotta turn my mic on. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, he, um, I guess I, I would like to kind of update everyone, um, on, or where we were with this, uh, resolution that I had pulled, and, uh, actually, will be considering in a vote next week. And, uh, but anyhow, um, wanted to kind of, on your desk, I think there's, uh, a revised, revision number two, and based on some of the questions that were posed at the last work session, um, they've highlighted in red, trying to answer some of those questions. And, uh, but basically, we took, I took the opportunity to pull that resolution too, because some of us commissioners had questions and stuff on, of trying to achieve this $7.5 million of infrastructure, that has to have technical assistance to be able to provide a plan to TDEC, um, to try to achieve the $7.5 million. So, if, you know, you, if, basically, if you don't have a plan, and you're not going to receive the $7.5 million infrastructure. So, I've asked the engineers, and I've asked, uh, Crystal to come in today to help try to answer some of those questions. And, um, at first, I, I guess we, there were some questions about the resolution. I think one of the commissioners were concerned that Cleveland Utilities' name was not on there, and the other utilities were not. Uh, the only reason, and I stated before, the only reason that Cleveland Utility was listed in that resolution is because, basically, that is one of the first services that the engineers have to, to provide. They have to basically figure out if we are going to go with Plan A, which is what they would prefer to do in the utility master plan. It cost us $75,000 to come up with, and then it took, uh, about three years to do a hard work and a lot of meetings, uh, which we can receive $56,250 back if we can show the one we do, if we do go ahead and agree to try to get this $7.5 million to, to, for the first time in history, to try to put some infrastructure, you know, planned infrastructure, some major infrastructure that will take us into the next generations to come. Uh, but anyhow, um, if we can show that the plan that we would present to try to achieve that $7.5 million, we would, um, receive back, uh, $56,250 for this plan. And we also, the, the, let me add too, before we move on, um, if we did vote to get, uh, hire assistance from the engineering firm to, to amend the, uh, the, the original contract for the master sewer utility plan that Crystal had put together in that resolution, we would also be refunded. Uh, and I believe, and, and I also gave you all the slide or PowerPoint presentation last week, and if you had the time to review that, you would see, and I pointed it out in one of the slides in the current meeting before, that, uh, and it's under my understanding that 90% of that $35,000 that we'd be voting on next week would also be refundable, and then the other 10% would be once the plan is approved. Uh, so, but keep in mind that the $56,250 that we would be reimbursed, and the $35,000 we would be in reverse, reversed, would come out of the $7.5 million. So, uh, but anyhow, and that's good that they would be willing to reimburse us for what we've already worked really hard on over the years and put in place. And, but at first, I'd like to, we had some questions, um, and Crystal had worked really hard on this resolution, and me and her had conversations, she had conversations with, uh, the engineers. Um, basically, while we left off, we didn't want to name any of the utilities. We were all under the understanding that there was five utilities, where, you know, if you would have sat in all the numerous meetings when we came up with this utility master plan, we know exactly how many utility companies we have, and, and, and I'm going to let her have the floor first, and let her explain to why she didn't want to put , uh, the names of any utilities there, because she basically wanted us to have the option to do what, if we decided to move forward and try to get this $7.5 million, we'd have the option to, um, be able to use any utility company that we wanted to. Uh, but Crystal, you could go ahead and, and then entertain any questions that any of the commissioners would want to ask you about the resolution itself.
Ms. Freiberg, uh, so, in essence, the other utilities are already accepting wastewater
Uh, also, just to help clarify that, the reason you don't negotiate with, say, Ocoee Utilities, they don't have the same sewer system. I know everybody thinks everybody's the same. These utilities do not all have the same thing. We're, we, we don't negotiate with Ocoee Utility for sewer capacity because they don't have sewer capacity. They only take affluent from their systems only. Cleveland Utilities has a gravity-fed sewer system. They take solids and water. Ocoee Utility only takes water, so there's no reason to go to Ocoee Utility to ask for sewer capacity, because they don't have a sewer, um, facility like that. Theirs is a totally different system. So, that would be one of the reasons that we don't negotiate with the other ones. We, Cleveland Utilities is who we have, they're the only sewer, uh, out there that would do that. So, they're the only ones that we have to negotiate with sewer capacity on. And also, so the $35,000 that is in this resolution, though, is reimbursable. Is that correct?
Are you asking me?
Commissioner...
Uh, yes, and then if you would have reviewed the PowerPoint presentation, it, it has all that documentation in it, and they can also, uh, talk about it too, once they come to the floor. Um, the, my understanding is, what, uh, what I read on one of the slides shows that we put up here on the big screen, that 90% is refundable at first, or, and then the other 10% maybe at the completion of the, and then I may be wrong, I don't know, but I'll let them speak on that, and, uh, but, yeah, but, uh, and then also, we also, like I said too, we can get $56,250 back of what we spent already on the utility master plan itself, also.
Commissioner Slater?
So, why would we look at spending $35,000 to an engineering firm when I would assume, I could be incorrect, that Cleveland Utilities, Ocoee, Eastside, any of the districts that we choose to work with would have engineers on their staff? So, why, why would we spend this and not work directly with the utilities? I, and I have three questions before you leave me.
Go ahead, Commissioner Epperson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The, um, basically, the, the utility companies, the, the master utility plan is not their plan. It's not no one's plan, uh, any utility plan. This is our plan. And all along, we've talked about the importance of water lines. That was our number one thing. I mean, I think I'm, I can speak for the rest of the commission, but that was our number one thing. That's not going to be, this is not going to be something that the, any utility company is going to be jumping up and down over and wanting to do our plan. So, if you want to do, you know, some, one of their plans, it could be completely different than our plan. This is the plan that the county commission put together. And the important thing, number one, it was to put in water lines in all the areas that this master utility plan has, um, pointed out. Uh, number two, septic tanks, uh, repair, that's not going to be in any of your util, five utility districts, uh, utilities, companies' plan.
It's not in this plan either.
Exactly what I'm...
It's not in this plan either. Because it is specifically called out that that is not included in here.
Well, the plan has not been, uh, created yet.
It specifically says in this plan that creation and administration of septic system
Yes, it's a good, it's a good question. And, and the reason that it's not in this particular authorization, this particular
repair rehabilitation program is excluded from this.
Yeah, I, I don't know which one you're referring to.
authorization is directed at making a, a viable application by the deadline, which
I'm talking about this plan right here that was laid at my seat. When you talk about...
is November 4th.
Well, we'll have to let the engineer speak on that, and, uh...
So, that's what all of this is trying to do, is get a application in by the deadline
Feel, feel free to come to the podium and speak on that, then.
to be able to get you the full amount of the funding.
Yeah, yeah, come on up, yeah, yeah, come on up.
Now, as part of, of what will be in the application, various line items, there'll, there'll be a line item for septic, uh, repair restoration system, so there's, there's field work to be done. There's also a line item that will be to actually create that program that doesn't exist, and to provide during the course of the, of the funding period, the administration, those would be line items in the application as well. So, that they're not part of the application, so that's why they're not...
But they're available with additional compensation.
Yes, but we were, we were focusing right now just to get you to the application. Now, assuming all that is, is eligible to be funded, and we're making that assumption that it is, uh, once confirmed by, by TDEC, there's a lot of things to actually implement all the projects that, that we would put in the application. And so, some of those things would be to actually create this program.
For additional compensation?
Yes, it would be. It would be a different, just, just like if, if there was an actual project, there's got to be planning, engineering associated just with that project. This would be the things associated with, you want to call the septic program a project. Uh, there, these are the, these are equivalent to, like you might say, the engineering and the contract administration of the project. Uh, but they're not part of the application. That's, that's why they're not here. They would be in the application as line item, uh, to be funded, uh, to do those things.
Okay. Yeah, yes, thank you. And then my next question, and maybe this is to the mayor, and i- is this not being bid for additional engineering firms because it's an amendment to the original $85,000 that we spent? Okay. That, that's all my questions for now. Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Pete?
Um, also, Cleveland Utilities engineers aren't familiar with this. It would take them three years or more to get up to the point we're at, unless they took their engineering that we just paid for and used it to move ahead with this new application to get the $7.5 million. So, we've got $7.5 million laying out there that we can get if we spend $35,000 more, which is reimbursable with the same firm, and we're not losing time, because we don't have much time. I think the deadline is coming up, it's in November. So, with that being said, um, I, I mean, I'm happy with this engineering firm and everything they've done so far, so I don't see a problem with moving forward with them. Um, plus, Cleveland Utilities wouldn't want this dropped in their lap, plus, they are not the same kind of engineering firm.
Commissioner Davis?
Commissioner Pete, have we, have we at least reached out to the other, um, utilities just to make sure that they're not interested in doing this?
In private conversations with all of them, they don't do this. This is not their forte. They, yeah, they're not interested. That's just in private conversations, me with two of them. The other companies, I don't even know if, I think they're just, uh, I, I haven't reached out to Eastside or any of the other ones, no.
Commissioner Davis?
Mayor Davis, I know that you've seen this. Have, have you reached out to make sure that they're not interested in doing this before we move forward?
I don't know if it's an answer to your question or not, but we have met with Cleveland Utilities, Ocoee Utilities, Hiwasi Utilities. They all have preliminary plans on how they would like to spend portions of this $7.5 million, working with their own engineers. She's right, they're not used to doing the application because, but they are used to working with the development district to do those applications. In meeting with Cleveland Utilities, I think it's fairly safe to say that they're not interested in sewer. They're still saying that, so at some point, we've got to go with that assumption and move on. But the other two, Ocoee and Hiwasi Utilities, Hiwasi is looking at upgrading their existing facilities to supply more water to both Cleveland and Ocoee. So, that's what they would be interested in doing, and they have plans, preliminary plans to do that. Uh, Ocoee is looking at, uh, upgrading their treatment facility so they can do more sewer outside the city limits, and they have plans to do that. So, that's where their plans lie. Our challenge is getting, taking those two plans and putting them in one application. Keep in mind, this is the seventh bucket that I told you about early on, but the state decided rather than to send it to us like they did the other ARP buckets and keep it simple, uh, I think they felt like they didn't trust counties to spend it wisely working with their utilities, so they decided to keep it and grant it out. Uh, that grant has a lot of stipulations in it that we've got to jump through the hoops to get to. But the utilities, their engineering's and the development district is the other option. I'm not speaking against what's before you today, but that's how we would normally apply for CDBG grants, as I often talk about. Does that kind of, in a roundabout way, answer your question there?
Commissioner Trumps? Yes, oh, sorry, Commissioner Pete?
Mayor, however, the CBD grant writers, the guys that we always use to try to get our grants, they're not familiar with this either, and it would take them at least two to three years to catch up to where we're at to make this application that they've already done, and they're not going to yet let them use...
But the other two, Ocoee and Hiwasi Utilities. Hiwasi is looking at upgrading their existing facilities to supply more water to both Cleveland and Ocoee. So that's what they would be interested in doing, and they have plans, preliminary plans to do that. Ocoee is looking at upgrading their treatment facility so they can do more sewer outside the city limits, and they have plans to do that. So that's where their plans lie. Our challenge is getting, taking those two plans and putting them in one application. Keep in mind, this is the seventh bucket that I told you about early on. But the state decided rather than to send it to us like they did the other ARP buckets and keep it simple, I think they felt like they didn't trust counties to spend it wisely working with their utilities. So they decided to keep it and grant it out. That grant has a lot of stipulations in it that we've gotta jump through the hoops to get to. But the utilities, their engineering's and the development district is the other option. I'm not speaking against what's before you today, but that's how we would normally apply for CDBG grants, as I often talk about. Does that kinda in a roundabout way answer your question there?
Commissioner Trumps? Yes, oh, sorry, Commissioner Pete.
Mayor, however, the CBD grant writers, the guys that we always use to try to get our grants, they're not familiar with this either, and it would take them at least two to three years to catch up to where we're at to make this application that they've already done. And they're not gonna yet let them use their master utility plan to create an application. I wouldn't if I had just created that. It still would take any other engineering firm three years to catch up, to get us an application. It's due by November.
And I don't mean to be speaking for or against what's before you. But we've applied for many TDEC grants in the past. They're all different, they're all unique. They're all very complicated. It makes them feel powerful in Nashville. The difference in this one is it's non-competitive, which means we know what we're gonna get if we jump through all the hoops. I'm hesitant because I realize it's just six months or five-and-a-half months. But on a normal million-dollar CDBG grant, we might have two months to get it done. Granted, this is different, but it's still TDEC grants that we're applying for. They're treating it as a TDEC grant, even though it's ARP money that went to the state.
Okay, Mr. Hughes.
Let's have one question. One, I thought that the part of this was gonna be setup requirements for the septic repair. I didn't know that was gonna be another additional cost to do that. I assume it'll be another thirty-five thousand. The other question I have, though, is if we have one survey, it's already been done by your company, that I assume done, basically what this is saying, drove around, got surveyed, done everything you'd know so you'd know where the growth was really going. I don't see any reason in doing another survey on the same survey that we've already paid seventy-five thousand towards. So I don't, I don't see the justification for the extra thirty-five thousand.
If we could go through a brief presentation of the TDEC American Rescue Plan Program, and then we can also go through the questions that you guys have asked, that Lori has sent to us. And then we can even go through the amendment to our contract that talks about the work that we've proposed on the project selection, the further work that's needed there, and then the application to TDEC. I think it may answer a lot of questions. And then we could, of course, answer any other questions you have. Would that be okay?
I think that'd be a good idea.
Okay. Well, and thank you for taking the time to be here and discuss this further. Thank you, Mayor Davis, and thank you, Mayor, for the day. Appreciate you being here. What we're mostly talking about today is the seven-and-a-half million dollars on about the oh-sixth or seventh line there. It's available to Bradley County through the TDEC ARP line. And... So the local funds that were directly deposited from the federal government is the one large bucket, I think y'all earmarked six, for utilities. And then you have the state fiscal recovery funds, the TDEC ARP fund over on the right. And that's what we're talking about today. And you've got the seven-and-a-half million dollars that you'll have to apply by November the first to be eligible, and if you don't, miss that month. So... Some very poor counties, it's fifteen percent. Counties that are very well off, it's thirty-five percent. They have to match. And so, but that match, that twenty percent can come from a various range of... It can come from the money you've already spent that's gone towards engineering. It can come from the bucket of money aimed directly deposited by the federal government. Use that money that you've already received to go towards your match so that you're effectively out of pocket for nothing. You've got the seven-and-a-half plus another maybe one-eight, or a total of a little over nine million dollars project. Y'all can fund water, sewer, septic systems, can absolutely be a part of it, and stormwater projects also. We haven't discussed that, but that's one of the things that you can fund with. It makes no difference to us. It's the county's prerogative where that money is spent. It was all, or all towards water or a portion towards heat. We work for Bradley County. So whatever Bradley County chooses to fund, we would try to use those funds in the most efficient way to fund that work. Well, this is the timeline for the application. As Mayor Davis funds the grant, a lot of these counties, Ledso County, another county, county has a lot of places in what they fund. Once you partner with a utility, it becomes a collaborative project, and there's a few strings attached. We'll talk about that, but you still have the option to fund a majority of what you would like to fund. So this is the ability to pay index. That's how they figure out how much your match is or your co-funding obligation is that we talked about. When you collaborate with a utility, and we'll go through an example in a minute, get a five percent reduction in your co-funding obligation. So that goes from twenty-five percent down to twenty, save you some. Here are the types of projects, again, that are able to be funded. Drinking water, which is talked about, may be the highest priority. We've identified a lot of drinking water projects, Commissioner Hughes, in our plan. So here are drinking water, here are projects that we're aware of. There are unserved roads and unserved residents. We can extend a main out here and serve these residents. One of the things, and Gary will talk about it further, that's in our proposal, is there's still some work to be done to make sure that if, you know, if the county chooses to extend a main down a road, that, you know, is that the best one? I think there's some that we know, boy, it's gonna make sense to try and extend a main here. As we get into trying to select between, you know, several different projects that may appear to be similar, let's do a survey. Let's survey the residents. Let's talk to folks and find out how many people would or would not tie onto it if there's a large tract of land. Is somebody open to developing, you know, somebody looking to develop that? Like, they would want a water main there, you know? Let's look at a lot of factors and figure out which one it makes sense, and try to rank that, bring that back to Bradley County, and again, give you guys the information so that y'all can select which projects we would like to fund. I think there were a couple of questions about this. Very important. Application is made by the county. The county is the applicant. So even if it's a project, let's say it's a new water line in the Ocoee Utilities area that the county would like to fund. Ocoee can't make that application. The application has to be paid by the county. Collaboration with Ocoee. We have included time in this proposal, the amendment, for that coordination with Ocoee Utility or whichever utility it may be, make sure they're on board. And they literally will have to write a letter of support of this project. So even though the negotiation for sewer isn't included, that wouldn't be needed for, to collaborate with Ocoee for a water line. That type of thing has been included to make application for it. So this is an example. It has some similarities with Bradley. Where they have, and this is a made-up county of Dunbar. Been given, in this case, they're saying, co-funding level of fifteen percent. Okay? They don't operate a drinking or a wastewater system. But they're served by four different utility districts. The county may apply to TDEC for a grant that includes projects from all four different utilities for drinking water and wastewater. And then it talks about, here's the amount. You've got the three million, plus you've got the fifteen percent for co-funding. And so that's just an example of the way Bradley County could do it. You could have multiple projects, multiple utilities, and it's all part of this application. The second bullet down. TDEC recommends partners, utilities, contribute fifteen percent to the project financially or through activities executed to qualify as a collaborative partner. So for example, back to, if there's a water line in Ocoee Utilities District, and if the county decides, we wanna put a water line on the road, we've got a lot of residents, they don't have water. Well, Ocoee's gonna be getting a water main. Now, they have to, you know, they have to maintain it and operate it, but they're getting a water main and some customers, so the county can, and this is part of the coordination that would be done with them, is to ask them to contribute to the project. So you try to get all that worked out during this application process so you know how much they're gonna contribute. Again, save the counties. Just a detail for you guys to... There is an infrastructure scorecard that each utility has to prepare. It basically looks for deficiencies with things like the maintenance of their system, if they have a high water loss percentage, that type of thing. And if they do, TDEC says, well, you're gonna take funds. You've gotta put at least a small percentage towards these types of projects. So again, during the coordination with a utility, if one of these types of things are identified, we bring it to the surface and bring it back to the county and let you know what that looks like. Okay. So just some things that are required during the application process. The third bullet down, a letter of support and commitment of funds from all entities identified. That's kinda talked about. Coordinate with the utilities. Get that taken care of. The proposal timeline, preparing the maps, updating the budget. Budgeting's very important. When you provide the budget, prices are very... So you wanna provide, there's ways to apply for it where, you know, you wanna make sure you shoot a little high because if the project costs more than you have budgeted, they're not gonna fund it. So you wanna shoot high on your price, but then you also wanna try to use all the funds you can. But if the project comes in lower than what you budgeted, you may be able to include some line items that you can add on to the project. We wanna be as smart as we can, use all the money that we can. Use the county's money efficiently. So just some thoughts. We do have to provide a budget on the front end, detailed schedule. And then, also, very importantly, all of the work has to be completed in the ground by September thirtieth of twenty-six. And that's a little under three-and-a-half years away. It's doable, but it's fast. So the steps are, you submit the application. If approved, prepare the final engineering plans and submit application. Get all of the state federal approvals for that. Bid the project publicly. Contractor goes to work. Get it done by that date with delivery of materials being delayed and that kind of thing. Again, it's doable, but it's not a lot of extra work. So I just make y'all aware. That's a general overview of the program. Gary will try to address the questions that you raise, and then we'll answer any questions.
Thanks, Adam. Yeah, first of all, just as Adam said, this is the county's application. Funds do not flow to the utility. They don't flow, they flow to you, from you, to the utility. And there's a lot of work that they have to do. You have the application, the overall application, and managing the funds flow. They have a lot of things to do. Mentioned these scorecards that they have put together. There's programs they've got to develop themselves, asset management plan. There's, so there's a lot of strings to this, and a lot of those will apply to the utility. So they're gonna have a lot to do. So that's why they're not gonna really wanna step up and do the application. They have enough to do on their own for the projects that would be funded through them. To get to Commissioner Hughes' question on why are we doing this again? We're not doing the same thing again. It's different than the master plan. For example, the master plan identified a number of projects based on needs. We took input from developers, we took input from the public. And based on all of that, we identified, there was over sixteen million dollars of wastewater projects, and over twenty-two million dollars of water projects, not counting the septic system program. But to try to, and we did preliminary rankings on those. But to try to narrow those down, because we can't fund all of those, fund a portion of them with this program, we have to have some more input from the people who say are on the road. As Adam brought up, we don't wanna build a water line on a road out there. If the people really, after you put it out there, the people are really not that interested. You know, we had public input coming in here. A lot of it was on septic. Not a lot on other individual roads and streets. We did get some, but much of it was septic-related issues. Many of you were here for those. And so we've gotta narrow it down now. So we've identified a number of water and wastewater projects. And we're gonna go down the list now, and we need to find out, are the people really interested in that? Are developers interested in actually doing it before we spend the money to do that particular project? So there's a lot more fine-tuning to take those, that long list of needs of projects down to, well, which ones should we actually do with it? So about half of the additional funds on this amendment are directly directed to try to narrow that list down to get to that point. The rest of it is going mainly towards putting the application together, coordinating with utilities. So that's, I hope, does that sort of answer what you, hopefully? So we're not redoing what we did. We're fine-tuning it down to which areas are people really most interested in? We may have identified a need that road has a water, doesn't have a water line. But if the people there are really not interested in that water line, now, maybe we should spend our money somewhere else where people are. And so that's what a lot of that survey work is about. To follow up on your attorney's comments about the negotiation with Cleveland Utilities, this was one of the questions y'all came up with at the last work session, was that Cleveland Utilities currently prohibits, they do not accept wastewater from outside the city. And so, so Ocoee Utility District does. They already do. We don't have that same issue with them that we have with Cleveland. So a number of the wastewater projects were to send that wastewater to Cleveland. Now, if they don't take it, we can always build a treatment plant. But the most expeditious and easiest way is to send it to Cleveland. So the point of the negotiation is to work out a way where Cleveland would be willing to accept that wastewater. So the, the point of the negotiation is to work out a way where Cleveland would be willing to accept that wastewater. Cause we think that's the best way for it to do, but that's why we, we anticipate some fairly significant negotiations with them to overcome that prohibition. We've talked to them. We think there's a way to do it. So that's what we'd like to try to do with that portion of this, of this additional money. So those are, those are a couple of, of major things. We did some cleanup elsewise, you know, in, in the amendment. But the two major things, the questions we wanted to answer was, uh, uh, the negotiation issue, we are going to coordinate with all these others. But in, it's not negotiation in the same sense to overcoming this sewer prohibition for Cleveland. So we don't anticipate issues with them. Uh, certainly want to work with them on projects now. Cleveland's going to get their own pot of money. They've got their own pot of money. So for projects in Cleveland, they'll, they'll do those. It's just the utility districts are going to have to come through the county. And so certainly we'll work with any of them. I think most of the lines, most of the, of the water and the sewer lines. That we identified as needs are, are in Okoye or Cleveland Utilities service area. So, you know, it's not to the exclusion of the other utilities. It just so happens that the lines that need, that we've identified as needs. Are primarily in those two, those two entities. And those are the ones we focus on, of course. Okoye is, is good to work with and we're not anticipating problems, you know, in doing that. So we look forward to including projects they may have in there on this. Water project from Hiwasi, I know they've got a project as well. So, you know, we, we look forward to getting started on this. The, the time is kind of short. We want to make sure we get everything in that's needed for a, a fully, you know, a full application by the deadline on that. That's, that's really what this is, that's really what this is. And it's good that, as, as Adam mentioned, that much of this appears like. Amendment as well as a good portion of. Is going to be reimbursable through this program. Those are, those are the main comments that I have on that. I'll be glad to answer any others that you might have.
Commissioner Slater, Commissioner Blake, and then Commissioner Epperson.
So what is your history with negotiating and collaborating? What are words that you use in your document with, with Cleveland Utilities? Do you have a successful track record working with Cleveland Utilities? You mentioned Okoye, uh, that they were easy to work with or good to work with. But what is your history with Cleveland Utilities?
Our company's been working with Cleveland Utilities probably for the last thirty years. Still have projects going on with them. So we work with them almost on. Not on this specific issue here, but in terms of just working with them. You know, I don't, you know, we know the people and we already talked to them about this issue. Think there's a way forward and based on those conversations. So, um, we think we can flesh it out and so that we're fairly confident on that. I mean, there's no guarantee, but. Cause ultimately it's got to go from if Cleveland Utilities agrees to it, still got to go to Cleveland City Council. They were the ones who actually put the.
It's interesting that you use the word flush in your comments, but I also find it interesting that you think it's doable. And Commissioner Peak says in the conversations that she's had, she doesn't think it's doable. So. What?
Recently, we've been having conversations. Recently, we've been having conversations that they are opening up to the idea.
For sewer.
Yeah, last year it was completely off the table.
And, and then would we be able to get a copy of your presentation, please, that you just showed today? Commissioner Blake.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Blake.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple of questions if I may. Kind of on the same lines as Commissioner Slater. This, uh, application process that you're gonna, uh, potentially do for us, are you doing this for any other municipalities, any other counties in the state of Tennessee?
Not currently.
I current, I mean, are, are you, are you talking to any other counties, uh, to do the same? Oh yeah, cause if, uh, economy's a scale and when you see something you'll, that they have or they shouldn't do, you'll, will benefit it and vice versa, so to speak.
Where our company itself is working with a number of communities in southeast Tennessee. They're all, they're all going after this money.
So, okay, that's good, that's good. When we agreed to do this plan and, um, I've had a lot of fun reading this plan, trust me. We had no idea that we were going to get federal money. Remember this was pre-COVID. We were sitting up here like, when that plan comes, how, what are we going to do kind of stuff? Obviously, we got, um, uh, the funding on this. I guess my question is this. We only have, like you said, six and a half million that we, we have here, I guess that we've earmarked in these multiple buckets. That's not near what your, your plan has. So in other words, if we were to do all this plan, we would still need more money, right?
If you did every project, yeah. So you have six and a half from the first bucket, I think seven and a half from the second. So there's, there's, there's a fair amount of total. So yeah, without that, if there are other projects, uh, we identified a number of other potential funding sources. Most of those are competitive. You would, you would have had to go look at those other potential funding.
So last week, um, this commission voted to earmark seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars towards the septic failure. And please understand, if I'm concerned that this application isn't going to address that, can you address that concern? I mean, cause if I understood your previous comments earlier. This is, uh, septic failure and addressing that with a corrective action or anything like that is not part of this discussion, if you will.
Sure, and it's a good question. Um, the creation of the program administration, in other words, there has to be some, some way, how are you going to administer this? Who's going to do that here at the county? If you're going to have someone administer it here, who's going to do it, yes, staffed? How are you going to decide who's eligible? How are you going to handle the reimbursement? What kind of limitations you can put on that? And then, and who's going to handle the flow of the money over time? All, all of that setup of that program i- is really not part of the application. That's why we didn't put it in here. We realize it has to be done. And we're suggesting that you earmark a portion of the total money, uh, for that program. It could be some percentage, could be six percent, seven, eight percent for that administration to create the program and administer the program. So that's what, that's what we're suggesting on that. Yeah, we realize it, it's, it's, it's either whether it's in the first pot of money or the second part of the pot of money. We're suggesting you put line items for that in this application.
And the reason why we did that last week is because it's a priority of ours and, and hopefully it doesn't get, uh, left out.
But you, you could also use money from that seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. You could also use a portion of that to, to do this very thing. And there's a portion of it that's going to be going to bricks and mortar, uh, to fix things, but you also have to administer. There's a, there's a small percentage of that cost.
But there's nothing that the state, I mean, you're right, if I understand it correctly, and please correct if I'm wrong, right now you're going after a new sewer line. That's if I'm, if I'm interpreting what you.
No, it's a, it, it could be.
This, this seven and a half million that we've heard about a hundred times now is for new sewer lines.
It could be sewer lines, water lines, could be the septic program, whatever you all want to find out of it.
Whatever we want to find out. So we got a la carte, we got things to choose from, right? I guess now I want to chat a little bit about the timeline. So when you were putting in your application, um, do you have to at least give a ballpark figures to these timelines? The reason I even ask that is because I work in, in the project world as well, totally different business, but projects is. Uh, I get a statement of work and a timeline and a project manager are calling me every other day asking for updates and stuff like that. It would make sense to me if we broke these up into smaller pieces. So that if, if a completion of a project is all that the feds are looking for, that project A, whatever it is gets done and then. Project B starts, are they running parallel? In other words, you don't have one big, long project that perhaps has the potential of not being. Completed by these hard deadlines that they are broken up into pieces. So you say, well, we did one, two, and three, maybe we didn't get to four. You see what I'm saying? Is in other words, you're, you're putting yourself in the best position to be successful with respects to the line, the deadlines.
Correct. And, and see, all these projects are gonna, each one of them is gonna have a timeline. So will be overlapping, probably, uh, many of them be overlapping, won't be sequential. So, um, yeah, and timeline that's just laid out, of course, has to make sure that they get through by that date in September of twenty-six. But yeah, there'll be timeline. That's part of the application is to come up with what's the timeline for these various projects.
Alright, so one of the other concerns I have, I know it seems like a lot of them, is kind of the same one we talked about with broadband. You got ninety-five counties in the state of Tennessee and other, and everybody's going to be going and asking for this money. That's good. But then you need all these engineers and architects and all that kind of stuff. And there's only a certain amount of them. There's only a pool of them, so to speak. In other words, you, you're going to have a lot of demand for a little bit of supply on the knowledge of people who know how to do this. Have you guys taken that into consideration that, that you, they're going to be put on the bottom pile or you're, we'll get to you in four months kind of stuff, you know what I'm saying?
I understand. And, and it is a challenge. It's, it's going to be a challenge. For example, when you go to construction, all this money nationwide is going to hit the, so utility contract. There's only so many for that to go around. We're concerned about that. We're concerned about the materials. But the sudden demand of all this, this money, billions of dollars hitting, uh, the supply chain. It, it, it's a valid question and, uh, engineering wise as well, planning wise. So, yeah, we are taking that into account. We, we're committing to you to have the applications in by the. And have, and work out timelines on the projects. Uh, the utilities are going to be heavily involved in that. Some of the utilities have their own engineers. Uh, so they're going to be involving those engineers to actually implement the projects with the county. So, you know, there's a, there's a lot of players that will be involved in it. We'll be representing you in terms of the application itself and collaboration with the utilities, but they may come along and say, okay, we, we're. We agree to this project. They want to use their engineer on that project. That's, that's fine. We, we'd be happy to work with them, but many of them have their own, they have their own.
I'm, I'm sure you thought about the labor pool of people who, the engineers and all the people who make this happen is, whether it's water, sewer, what have you, I mean, on the drain on it. Last question, if you may. I think some of us had, uh, an eye open experience not too long ago when this commission room was full of people. Uh, and they didn't really want a zoning, uh, to be approved. And it was all be, I wouldn't say all because, but a few years ago, we put, we, we funded with the help of, uh, some grants out there at Taylor Elementary. I can only anticipate that there's, that's going to happen again when new sewer lines go through all parts of our county and stuff like that. You mentioned earlier that you're going to solicit input from residents, um, and how they feel, whether they would tap in. I mean, I just, I guess their, my question would be, have you considered the environment that we're in right now where not everybody wants sewer? I, I'm sure you heard that during your, uh, your.
We, we heard it loud and clear.
But we, I, I say, I'm only speaking for myself. I saw it firsthand in two or three meetings that. This, I'm speaking on the, on the sewer piece. This isn't the most popular thing going on right now. And you're gonna, you're gonna, you're going to, because the application part, I mean, what would they have to say? Yeah, we don't want it?
Well, we heard it loud and clear. One of the things we did hear was that we don't want, certainly we don't want sewer out in what are called rural county portions of the county. None of the lines that we looked at planning go into those portions of the county. So on the sewer side, and it's the same as on the water. What we don't want to do is put a line out there and have people say, we don't want that line and, and we're not going to tap into it. And why would we spend the money, even though there, it appears there's a need, maybe bad septic issues along that road? So we, we say, okay, this is a, this is a need and appears to be a high priority need. But again, if the people are not going to want it, uh, that's part of this, the survey information we get. We, we need to know that. I don't, I don't want to put the, you don't want to put the sewer line out there and have people not avail themselves of it. Cause we could put the money somewhere.
Well, that raises an interesting question. I apologize, Mr. Chairman, is that when you, and I'm, I'm really thinking new sewer lines. And I know there's, you've just answered a previous commission, uh, question about more, but, um, the sewer lines are not just for existing homes already. Obviously developers are going to see the, oh, you know, and we have a housing shortage, so to speak, uh, and, and more housing, high density and all that. So it's going to be a combination of both, right?
Yes, and, and part of our survey thing is to go back to the developers on that specific road. Say, okay, there's some tracks on this road. Guys, you guys just step up the plate. Is this something that you consider be developing? Yeah, I mean, so we're, we're, we're planning that. The survey is planning to contact both the residents as well as interested developers, see just how much interest.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Epperson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to point out, Gary, uh, when you did the master utility plan and you proposed, uh, five or six locations for sewer. Uh, we're, and, and I asked this question before and I just wanted to, and you didn't touch on this, but those locations were kind of, it, to come up with those locations. One of the major factors of that was where there was a major septic tank failures and things. Was that part of your decision making to try to, when you did the master utility plan?
Correct.
Yeah, that's why. I just want to make sure that got out there. And then when this line goes in, uh, uh, say if you propose two lines, well, we, we did the water, you proposed some water lines, we proposed, uh. And you know that the septic tank repair is, uh, the second, uh, important thing to this commission. And then say we do two or three lines to, to, to keep in that timeframe. Those would be area, it wouldn't, that, say a thousand feet goes in and then, and anyone that has septic tank failures, they would hook into that line. And then, like you said, with the developers, you hope that they get involved because, um, when you, if we, if the county uses this funds, the seven and a half million to put in a thousand feet. We would hope that the, and then too, this is how it usually works. And then I'm wondering if the, you know, the, and I'm sure that it will work in this. Say a developer purchases a, a piece of property, um, a, a half mile down the road and he has, you know, has to put in extra amount of feet of sewer line that that was already there. That, that they, you know, these funds paid for. And then that line is paid by the developer. Then the, all the lines and all the infrastructure leading to that, uh, water lines, sewer lines is paid by the developer, not the taxpayer. And then everything within that planned development is paid by the developer. Cause a lot of people don't understand how all that works. They think that it's the taxpayers that pay for it. It's actually the developers. And then those lines that the developer pays for and not the taxpayer goes by other houses that have, are having septic tank failures. Because you've identified these septic tank or sewer lines in, in the most failed areas of our county where the septic tank failures are occurring. So we would hope that those developers would come in and participate in and then help, hopefully keep our affordable housing, um, problems under, you know. Or help towards achieving, trying to solve that problem. So I just wanted to point that out to the other commissioners.
I mean, we, we, when we, when we laid out some of the sewer lines that we recommended, uh, there was a couple of things. One was septic tank. Density of septic tank issues in that area. Uh, the other was, uh, you know, we need affordable housing, which means we need people that, uh, sewer can provide affordable housing. Cause you can reduce the lot size. Get, get, give an area, you can get more housing. And so that was one of the things. And it's also why in the survey we're proposing to do as part of this. Is that certainly we're going to go back to developers on those, those roads that we identified as, as needs from the standpoint of sewer. Both the, the septic tank as well as the residents themselves as well as the developer.
Commissioner Repper.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to go back to, uh, the, uh, more and look at the line of failing sewer systems. Do we have an identification process? You described an identification process as far as sewer in the whole county. Do we have one that specifically targets, uh, failing sewer systems and then a priority list like, uh, I'm going to give you an example. If he, if you have wastewater in your backyard servicing, that would take precedent over, uh, something else, so on. Do, do we have something like that that we could possibly put in place?
We don't have that. You're, you're speaking more to the, what I call the septic tank program itself. How are you going to prioritize? You know, who's going to be eligible? Uh, that's part of that program that I, I mentioned earlier was, is still to be created. The fleshing out the details of that, uh, the doing of that is, we think is eligible under this to be funded. But to do what you're talking about right now, that is not yet been done. We, we can identify areas where there are failings. The state TDEC has already, already have a map that shows just in general, there's a large number all over. The state TDEC has already, already have a map that shows just in general, there's a large number all over the, they're focused in certain areas. Those are the areas we're hoping to be able to look at sewer lines, but there are, there are failing systems all over. They may be, they may be more in certain areas, but they're all over the county, we kinda know where those are. Uh, but when you set up a program, you're gonna have to come up program figure out how to solicit applications for residents, and how are you gonna screen those, prioritize those, that has still got to be.
Will, will you set that up, or do we set it up, or are we, is sort of in a combination?
I think it'll be a combination, there's also some help, uh, there's a, a Southeast Tennessee local development, uh, that has done some of it. Uh, and, uh, so, I think there's a program, kind of a go-by program that can be used.
Uh, two more things, and, and you can even do this with yes or no, uh, this is a little bit more targeted, Mayor. Mayor, you, you had described earlier about, uh, the funding that, uh, we would be getting from water, and I think you labeled that as more of state funding instead of federal government funding, uh, this seven and a half million doesn't, eh, they don't overlap, am I, eh, or is that totally separate? Uh, that what you were referring to earlier, uh, and I don't mean today, eh, in the past.
This is the bucket that early on, I said there will be another bucket coming later, uh, I think the amount changed somewhat. But, early on, when I presented you the six buckets.
Yes, sir.
Originally, I had a seventh one on there that was gonna be coming from the state at a later date, that's the one they've turned into this grant that he's, that's being talked about here now, yes.
Okay, that, that helps me, and, and one last question for any of you, uh, you said again, and I just wanted to make sure that I heard this correctly. Uh, if we, if the commission decided to go ahead and do this, uh, and, and, and invest into this, then, uh, basically ninety to a hundred percent of this is reimbursable, am I, am I correct in saying that?
Our understanding is that, that you're talking about the master plan costs.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that, that, I think the number was around fifty-six, uh, thousand of the, of the original amount, plus all of this amendment here, our understanding would all be eligible under, under the TDEC.
Okay, thank you, that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
I wanna add one thing, Kevin, uh, because it's been mentioned about the match, it's not been addressed yet on this one, but anytime we've done CDBG waterline grants or whatever, we always require the utility to provide that match, it's never cost Bradley County anything, and that will be our goal in this one, is to get them, whichever utility's involved, they'll take care of the match.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Raper, Commissioner Cryer, then Commissioner Thompson, then Commissioner Hughes.
Uh, thank you. I'll, uh, I'll make a full disclosure to you, I don't want sewer lines running all over Bradley County that's outside the city limits, so I'll start with that premise right there. Uh, we are in the twenty-first century, as I've said several times, we have a considerable number of people in Bradley County that don't have public water. They're out in the rural areas, pasture fields, roller houses, what have you, the water is healthy today, but it leaches through and is unhealthy, maybe tomorrow or the next day. Uh, so it's important, even though they might not have want, might not want to connect, it's important that they have the availability of that public water to connect. And, uh, I, uh, I have an issue, I know you've worked great with Cleveland Utilities and that's good, but to, go back to, um, I think Commissioner Slater's earlier comments, the, uh, Cleveland Utilities works great if you're within that boundary line, economic growth or whatever they call it, but they have the responsibility to go beyond that, and they normally refuse to go beyond that, to service those areas outside the, those boundaries. So, we have people out there, if we don't take care of them, are not ever gonna get public water while, while we're on the commission. The, uh, next, uh, issue I have really, I guess, is with the mayor, uh, outside of sewer. Can't we go ahead and get grants, they have their own engineers, most of them do, on water, and, and the septic, we've got set aside already, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to make sure they didn't get shafted out of anything, and, uh, maybe we, we can get the water without going through all these models that we're listening to on grants, is that possible?
We can include, once we decide, if you, let's say, for example, you didn't wanna do any sewer with this money, it could be water. But then we also have the water bucket to refer to, so we can go to an Ocoy Utilities, we've gotta put together a plan for this money first, get that plan out there, and it could be water. I'd probably be a little bit of both, uh, as far as Ocoy Utilities is concerned, uh, Hiwasi, that would all be water. Uh, and then we come back with the water bucket and address more water lines in the future. Cleveland, I think, will work with us on the water lines if we're willing to pay a big percentage of it outside the city, it's the sewer that's the issue. But, they're willing to do the water, Ocoy's willing to do the water, and Hiwasi Utilities is wanting to upgrade so that they both can do more water. But we can use it out of both buckets, the state grant bucket that we're talking about, and the bucket we've already set aside, is that?
I, I think you've added some clarity to it, I, um, I think we need to take care of these homeowners that have septic problems. I walked around backyards as Commissioner Peak and Commissioner Apperson have for many years, uh, as an appraiser, I always had to walk around the yard and check the s- septic system out, and, and I agree with what you, you gentlemen have said, we have a serious problem out there. Uh, these backyards have dark green spots all over the place, that, and plus the affluent coming to the surface. But we have set aside three-quarters of a million on that, but, uh, that might not be enough from, from several people that have said that, and thank you very much, I just wanted to throw my comments in there.
Thank you, Commissioner Cryer, Commissioner Thompson.
I guess probably, uh, Commissioner Cryer probably was on the same line I was thinking, and, uh, appreciate him asking those questions, of course. I know for a fact that we don't have a, a good reputation or a, or a good road with the city when it comes to talking about sewer and water. And they won't stay within their limits, and, uh, that's fine, that's reason, we got people like Ocoy and Hiwasi and people like that that wanna put water and sewer in. Uh, one question I would like to ask is, uh, you said Cleveland Utility, uh, would accept or would not accept our sewer? And if not, then we'd have to build a, like, uh, uh, we'd have to build our own treatment plant, or Ocoy Utility or whoever. Of course, Ocoy's the only one I, I, I think at this point is doing any sewer. And, uh, so my question is, is if the city does agree to accept our sewer and do some water outside the city limits, are we, are we gonna be in a fistfight with them about annexation? And, uh, and that's, uh, that's something I'd really be concerned about, that, uh, I don't know how they've answered, uh, that question about accepting sewer, whatever, but, uh, I just wonder if that question was ever brought up about, uh, it probably wasn't, but I'm sure it would be, if, if they did that, well, there'd be some questions about annexation.
I don't think any of the pro, any of the projects we're looking at are gonna be contingent on annexation, that's not the way that we were doing these. But, in the, in the master plan, what we've already indicated, is that if there's property close to city limits, say of Cleveland, uh, that's within their urban growth boundary, if it's developer, he'll just go ahead and ask for annexation, he'll annex it, and that way, he can get his sewers that way. Most of these projects here are outside of that, they're either not right next to Cleveland, or they're out, they're, they're outside of the urban growth boundary. So, if they're outside the urban growth boundaries, they're, they're not even, annexation probably won't even come up. Uh, so we're not anticipations, we're not anticipating certainly that these, and there's gonna be any quid pro quo with all these projects, uh, where we might do a project, uh, to, to send either sewer to Cleveland or extend water in their service area, uh, outside their city limit. I don't, that's not the plan of this, now, would that, would that promote annexation requests in the future, I guess it could, but if you're outside their urban growth boundary, there's other things they'd have to do even to be able to annex that area, and most of these projects are.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson, Commissioner Hughes.
Mr. Chairman, I, a lot of the conversation today has been about TDEC, and I have been questioned about septic system from Commissioner Raper, and I've heard Commissioner Cryer. Uh, there are actually two officials from TDEC that deal with septic systems here, I, I don't know if they are willing to speak with us about some of these questions, or if they'd rather have that, like, prob, conversation, I don't know. But, uh, anyway, they are Mark Dillard and Megan Pott gets here, and hopefully I said that correctly. Um, I think they've got an answer for some of the things that's been brought up, and I know that everyone has got text with links and things of that nature, so, um, with that, if you guys are, want to speak on any of these questions that are asked, or, or was asked. Okay. Commissioner Raper, what was the questions you were asking earlier?
If you, if one of you will come up here, I don't care which one. Draw, draw straws.
As you're walking up here, in the event of time, I'll, I'll go ahead and ask, but, uh, mine was, uh, more of the failing septic, uh, system. Uh, he had talked about more of a broad plan, uh, do we have a plan that, uh, would prioritize, uh, needs as far as failing sewer sip, uh, systems? And, um, you know, and I gave the example of, uh, we got raw sewage coming up in the backyard, that would take precedent over, um, you know, just, uh, toilets, um, stopping up every now and then, or, uh, you know, you may even have worse, uh, case scenarios, uh, do we have something like that, or can we put it in place?
The answer is, I think, our idea and our, really best left of Bradley County, what to allocate towards that, I think that's our opinion. Um, number two, I sent Alex. So I sent them some numbers, just giving an idea of where, you know, where the most repair permits are. For certain. Throw it down that way, just to, just to see where the, are occurring, occurring by chance. Some three. Or, or.
And, and just one comment is this, is I know, uh, different places, I've actually visualized these, uh, we have people that are ready to abandon their house, they've had septic tanks pumped out a number of times, they're out of money, uh, they have no options, uh, so, I mean, it goes on and on, but, uh, uh, tho- those kind of issues are my greatest concern, you know, we're not a third world country, we, we've got to, uh, address these, these failing sewer sip, uh, systems that we're talking about, thank you.
Mr. Dillard, just a quick question, when a repair permit is issued, is typically at its worst at that point, because it's, there's been a repair permit issued, is, am I wrong on that, or am I correct on that?
Well, a repair permit's issued, obviously it has to be failing, unbare. The last thing that we try to do on a piece, a piece of property, the I approach it, don't wanna add field lines. That's for number one, the cost of homeowner, you know, perv land, so it's very important to try to fix it without doing it, in some cases. Two, you know, and then, then there's other issues, once that happens, there's other issues that arise, such as don't have enough.
No.
So, those can be sometimes those properties that can issue, their funds would not help them, because there's. Something. Very few, but there are some that.
And last question, I, I'm, I'm a layman when it comes to this, okay, so you're explaining everything to me, when you say failing system, what exactly means a system is failing?
Well, for, for me, it's say that's, you're bleeding out on the ground, discharging, effusing, now backing up.
I'm saying, so, for me, that would be the worst-case scenario.
Commissioner Roff.
Yes, I've, uh, asked this question several times to our engineers too, but looking at, Mr. Blake here has the map of all the failing systems supposedly in Bradley County right now, uh, I'm not sure if you put that, or helped them put that together, or if they put it together on their own.
On them.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, I guess my question and, and my concern is that we've got a lot of money here to put into septic systems. And, looking at the maps and things, what causes septic systems to fail in Bradley County at this number? I understand that some places you can't put in field lines, or enough field lines, you don't have the property to put in field lines. And, is there any other alternative, if you can't repair the septic system, what's a person gonna do? Do they, is there any other options? We could spend tons and tons of money on septic systems, but if it can't be repaired, what's our other options?
Obviously, to install field lines for a septic system, suitable soil has to be present.
What if a person doesn't have enough property to do it?
Very good, and, and oftentimes what happens is we have to go back in, system, system, and repair it where it's at. Never a great idea, but that's, that's your only option, go back in and replace it, in the soil that.
So, that's a gigantic sum of money probably, isn't it?
Yes, well, it's an expense to the homeowner, but it's also an. So, yeah, so that's, that's where, you know, on really small lots, a lot of that cluster.
Real small lots start with, and they don't have room to expand their field lines.
So, yeah, but there's no suitable soil present. And they go right back into the same soil that.
So, we've allocated seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars toward septic tanks at this point in time, anyway. You did the map per se, kinda helped with them, will that even come close?
I, I don't, I don't know.
Thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Peak, and then Commissioner Apperson.
Thank you, Mr. Dillard, for coming, two hours that you could've, I'm glad you are here, but that's two hours, you're two weeks behind timetable on some of our requests, but anyway. Uh, and then another thing these people have to do is continually pump their tanks, if there's no other resolution, all they can do is just continue to pump their tanks until they have sewer in front of their house to tap on to, technically, if it's at the worst-case scenario at that time. Thank you, Mr. Dillard, for coming, my other comment was for the forced annexation issue, just so everybody continues to know and have this knowledge, there is no forced annexation. There is a law against forced annexation, so if anybody wants to be annexed, they can request annexation if they're close to it, but you cannot force annexation on anybody, even if it's in the urban growth boundary area, the city cannot force annexation, that's my only comments, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Apperson. Thank you, Commissioner Epperson.
Well, I mean, obviously greatly help, but like I said, you know, in some, some lots, we can issue permits to go right back into the same existing trench. And it's not ideal, but we can do that. Not like, you know, if they didn't have sewer, I mean, it wouldn't be the end of the world is what I'm saying. We can still issue permits to go back. So it's not as if we're just going to walk away and be like, oh, well. Oh.
Any other questions? Give us one.
Summarize for me what we're, we, we're deciding with this work session to deal with thirty five thousand dollars. Give them the right to do preparation for a full application.
Correct.
That's what this meeting is about.
Yes.
To deal with all of this right now. Then you're going to be looking at all the, how to answer all the things we're putting into this plan that we're giving you the opportunity to do, right? So the thirty five thousand is to put you all to work to answer these questions, put it in a plan.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dillard. Appreciate you coming today.
Sure. Thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Raper.
Just one comment from our discussion of this is, uh, it, it sounds like, uh, timeliness is everything here. And, uh, and we don't have an abundance of it. Some of us are leaving, um, for one reason or another. But, uh, one of the things I wanted to say is this, uh, whatever means we need to, we need to hurry and start developing a priority list, uh, of, uh, whether they're call ins, whether we advertise to the public through media. I don't know, but, uh, we need to, uh, in a very timely manner, uh, get these out to the people that are, uh, have failing se- septic systems and they respond to it. So.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Could I just add to that?
Sure.
Since I haven't spoken in the whole, whole period here. Um, you said in your presentation that you had a district or two that had a model for this.
Correct?
A model for how to make this decision? Did y'all say that or did I just pick it up? Some, some districts are doing that priority list.
Not so much the district. This is, this would be a, a, I call it a planning council, but, uh, Southeast Tennessee, uh, I think it's called Natural Resources Development Council, uh, has dealt with this before. And so we think there's probably a go by that they, that they have used on how they do it.
There is a model out there.
We think there is, yes. And, and so rather than creating, you know, having to create another one, we'll obviously borrow from whatever's already out there. And, and it's quite likely that, uh, uh, other jurisdictions, uh, you're not the first to deal with this. So, you know, search other jurisdictions. There's probably already programs that you can borrow from that would get you well down that road.
Thank you, Commissioner, Commissioner Hughes?
Last question. I hadn't, the only concern, and, and maybe I just need a clarification. This study that we're looking at, that you are talking about doing, is or is it not going to set up the criteria for this septic repair? I, I've heard no, but I, I want to make for sure that I'm hearing correctly.
The application does not do that.
So this does not cover that portion of it?
Yeah, this covers the application, which will include, which will include line items to do the very thing you're talking about.
I understand what you're saying, that the line items in the, the grant would cover that. However, the criteria is one of the things that we, we were needing set up also. And it's the one thing that I've heard everybody talk about that's here. So that's what I'm trying to figure out.
Yeah, it has to be created.
And that would take another survey or another pa- payment to get that sort of, or the criteria set up?
It would, yes, it would, it would be funded through the program, uh, but it would be a separate task. It would not be part of the application.
That's, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes. Commissioner Peak?
So final on that, whether or not, it doesn't matter who does the criteria. We have to have the criteria done and none of us are professional enough to get this criteria together, nor do we have the administrative time, hour or power to administrate it. So we have to have someone do it. So we got to pay somebody. So like you were saying, we have to allocate administration fees and someone to make this criteria because we, uh, you want to make a mistake and get sued on the criteria of it. We can, but I, I don't want to be part of that. Um, so we have to have somebody implement it, no matter what. But the application for the state, that is not included.
Thank you, Mr. Peak. Moving into item two.
Mr. Chairman, I was just going to go ahead and thank everyone.
Sure. Thank you. You guys are welcome.
Yeah, I, is any more questions?
No, there's not.
Okay. Uh, I'd just like to go ahead and thank them for, for coming today. And, um, and all the questions that you've answered and, uh, and also, um, uh, Crystal, I'd like to thank you for coming and, and sitting in this long meeting and, and doing the, or talking about the, uh, resolution that we prepared and together. And, um, and not, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to go ahead and put that on the next voting session because the time is of essence.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Out, item B, Commissioner Peak?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mine's simple. Um, we've got all this high tech equipment that we have invested in, as you can see, at the top of the, uh, ceiling here and somewhere in the rear. Um, and a lot of us cannot attend all of the committee meetings, especially finance and different things. So instead of having, um, meetings at different locations, like, uh, anywhere other than this room is not, I don't think, uh, being transparent to our constituents or to the public. So we've had many requests that we have them in here and on live video. So I would request that we do that. Um, I don't know how much input you have on this. I thought it would be pretty simple. If everybody wants to be transparent, they shouldn't have a reason, uh, to vote against it. But I want to put on the agenda next week or the voting session to have all committees meet in this room. And it'd also be broadcast live on our Bradley County government page so that everybody can hear and see what's going on. I know the banner is always there to, um, represent what goes on at these meetings, but some of us can't attend them. And I think that the public deserves to see everything that we do in all of our committees. So I'm putting that on the, uh, agenda for next week.
Okay. Any discussion, Mr. Slater?
So hypothetically, if we had an issue at EMS and building and grounds needed to meet, they could not go and meet at building and grounds.
Anything that you would do as a field trip, like when we go to an EMS building and we're walking around it? I know that can't be broadcast, but any kind of sit down meeting, yes. I don't think that EMS should meet at EMS. I think EMS should meet in here. We had the road department that used to meet at the road department and we squashed that and brought it in here. I don't know if they're still doing it here or not, but it makes no sense to have to go to that location to have the committee meeting because the public cannot be present. So I understand field trips, I'm not saying that. Um, just any committee that will go down, have a meeting and go and sit needs to be in here unless you're going to have a field trip.
Mr. Blake?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I'm in agreement with, the transparency is, um, wonderful. You know, we should all strive for it. Um, but my concern is the implementation of this. Um, who's going to, who's going to do the stuff like that? Uh, right now, I believe it's the mayor's, uh, he has Adam, uh, handling all of that. I just know that in, especially in finance, that's the one I know, I'm very familiar with. Uh, Lori is the backup, should that not happen on the full commission. But during finance, she's very busy taking care of a lot of other things. Um, so I just want to make sure that we adhere to the rule if it passes. But, um, our Lori, uh, ours, it's got other things to do. But I just want to make sure we, we, you know how we all love to jump into these things and we, and then oh, by the way, kind of things. Uh, because she's very busy with a lot of things that we ask her to do. So just addressing.
Thank you. Mr. Peak?
I'm sure she's very busy, but she's also our right hand woman. And I'm sure she could find the time during finance to come and do this implementation for the transparency of our constituents. They deserve that. So, um, it's, sometimes y'all meet an hour, sometimes two hours, but, uh, I'm sure we can come up with something, but I still think, no matter what, I mean, needs to be implemented.
Thank you, Mr. Peak. Mr. Thompson?
I guess we'll vote on it and feel how we feel. See how we feel.
There we will.
Well, that's what we did.
Mr. Winters?
There's a, there's a point in time where juvenile needs to be a juvenile. Time that it's not a field trip. You're meeting there where you got the information there, uh, to bring here and to set up would be difficult. You're talking about the nursing home board where two of us sit on as public meeting. And you sit on the, the city, city, uh, services board, Howard?
Just talking about our committee, just our committee, our standing committees here, not the boards outside of that.
Oh.
Juvenile's. Yeah, juvenile is, it's juvenile.
There's about, there's, there's some that, that it's best to be at your facility that you're working with. That would be, it would give us, you know, and I, I believe in transparency too. But we have a, we have a minutes done, we have it presented here. Wait.
Thank you, Mr. Winters. Any other questions about that? Adam Seig, Commissioner Hughes? Anyone have any questions about the two additional changes?
So R2 will no longer include apartments or mobile homes or travel trailers or tents or yurts or whatever?
Any other question? Commissioner Cry? Sorry, didn't see you.
This basically is just a refinement of the zoning regulations that currently exist. Is that correct? Okay, so I, I guess my question goes around mobile home parks and, uh, travel trailer parks. Uh, not too many people in my backyard or your backyard or their backyard wants one of those. So, uh, are we dealing with? I, I have a, I don't know, I guess my memory's slipping me, but I don't remember, uh, too much zoning in Bradley County that have trailer parks. Uh, maybe, and we're, I guess, I, uh, farming, if it's zone farming, uh, you can do anything you want. Roller houses, uh, trailer parks or ever, if you get the public to listen to you. But I, I just, uh, am curious. And you, you answered my main question. It's a refinement of the current zoning restrictions and everything would still have to come before the pub, public to be clarified and approved, listened to.
Commissioner Raper?
Um, uh, I, I have no problem with the resolution at all. But, um, uh, what if, um, somebody is on R2, but because of the new and it goes to R3, do they automatically get moved over to there or are they grandfathered in? What, what happens with those that will be transitioned from one to another? Okay. Thanks, Bentley. Thank you.
Thank you, Bentley. Any other questions about this? Commissioner Epperson?
Um, I was going to comment on Kevin Raper's comment there. Um, is it, am I think, uh, are you asking if they'd like, say, any, uh, preliminary plats that are out there currently? Oh, okay. All right. I was going to say the vesting bill would cover those and then, but he's talking about somehow. All right. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? No questions? Communication from the audience, anybody who wants to speak before the commission? And I'm grateful that you don't want to today. Thank you. Announcements. Next meeting, voting session, Monday, May sixteenth at noon here at the courthouse. Upcoming events, Wright Brothers Pie Center Crew graduation and showcase tomorrow at eleven o'clock at one thousand, um, Vacher Boulevard. Education Committee will meet May eleventh at ten thirty here in the commission room. Walker Valley graduation, May twelfth, seven thirty, Walker Valley High School. Tyre cleanup, May fourteenth at eight thirty, exit twenty. And Ukrainian fundraiser and dinner, May fourteenth, six o'clock at the Cleveland Church of Evangelical Faith. We are adjourned.